Good evening and welcome everyone to this meeting of the King's Barton Forum. The time is six o'clock and this meeting is being held under the regulations which came into effect on the 4th of April 2020 in response to Covid-19. My name is councillor Jane Rutter and I chair this forum. There are a few housekeeping reminders to run through as there are new working practices in response to the regulations. First of all, could I ask everyone present in this virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted and your cameras turned off whilst you are not addressing the meeting? As this will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. I would also like to advise you that this meeting is being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Members and officers, where appropriate for each item, please use the chat function of the meeting to indicate when you wish to speak or to raise a point of order or explanation, and I will invite you to speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn, so please, all members, keep your contributions as clear and concise as possible. When speaking and referring to the agenda papers, please make sure that you reference the page number or paragraph. Thank you. This meeting is planned for a maximum of two hours, but we do hope to finish before that if possible. Finally, if members wish to leave the meeting at any point, could they please make themselves known to me through the chat function? I will announce to the meeting that you are to leave the meeting. Right now, perhaps I could ask our Democratic Services Officer Matthew to take a roll call of members to confirm who is present this evening. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you Chair. Members, if you wouldn't mind unmuting your microphones, I'll just do a very quick roll call. I'll start with the Winchester City councillors. Councillor Rutter.
Present.
Councillor Godfrey.
Present.
Councillor Horrall.
Good evening, I'm present.
Councillor Lerni.
Present.
Councillor Porter.
Good evening, present.
Councillor Prince.
Present.
Councillor Scott.
Good evening, present.
And councillor Weir.
Good evening, I'm present.
Moving on to the Hampshire County councillors, councillor Warwick.
Councillor Warwick, can you switch your microphone off please because there's terrible interference? I think we know you're present and I hope we can sort that out. Thank you, Matthew. Keep going.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Todd.
Present.
Moving on to councillor Iredale.
Good evening, present.
Thank you, good evening. And finally councillor Burgess. Chair, I've not seen councillor Burgess join. I've not had apologies either, so we'll get the meeting going and I'll make some inquiries if that's okay.
Thank you. Could you let us know who else is here please, Matthew?
Thank you Chair. If I run down the officers present on the call this evening Chair, we've got Julie Pinnock, Service Lead Built Environment, Chris Hughes, Implementation Officer, myself, Dave Shaw and David Blakemore from Democratic Services. In addition Chair, from Hampshire County Council, we've got Joe Holmes from Hampshire Highways. From Cala, we've got Viv Hill and Ian Currie. Residents' Association, I've seen Mike Slin join. I haven't seen Katerina or Ed join this evening Chair. And finally Chair, we've got two members of the public, Vicky Bolton and Chris Polter. And finally Chair, there's a couple of other members that have joined the call, councillor Hiscock and councillor Cunningham. Oh, and I can now see Katerina's joined us as well Chair. Apologies if I missed anyone, but I think that's everyone. Thank you Chair.
Great, thank you very much Matthew. And before we move into the listed agenda items, there's just a couple of things to update everybody on. I hope you've all seen copies of the correspondence between myself and the county council following the last meeting of the forum. We've made these available on the city council's website and sent them out to you all in advance of this meeting. As you will see from councillor Humby's reply, I'm very pleased to report that significant progress has been made towards a signalised pedestrian crossing for Andover Road. And we must congratulate the residents' association on their successful petition. I know that councillor Porter played a key role in some of these meetings at county level, and I will be asking her to update us on that and the other issues raised by councillor Humby in his reply in due course. We've seen recently a letter from the Chief Executive and I'm disappointed that at present there is still no polling place in King's Barton indicated. And I will continue to press for a polling place in King's Barton that is much closer to their community than the present polling place which is in Hebburn Worthy at the Jubilee Hall. Finally, some changes to the forum membership. I'd like to welcome Winchester City councillor Anne Weir to the forum. And I'd like to advise that the Hebburn Worthy Parish Council representative on the forum is now councillor Mel Iredale, replacing councillor Duncan. So welcome to you both. Now that we are fully formed, I'd like to propose that we appoint to the forum a vice-chair. And I'd like to nominate councillor Weir. Would look for a second please and any other nominations. So do we have a second for councillor Weir please?
I'm happy to second councillor. They're rushing to do it.
They're falling over themselves. We'll go with councillor Lerni, thank you Kelsey. Any other nominations for vice-chair? Nope, lovely. Thank you very much. If there are no nominations, as I say, councillor Weir, you are now the vice-chair and perhaps you could help me during the meeting by monitoring the chat and letting me know when members wish to speak. That would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rutter. Can I duck in here? Councillor Cunningham has had his hand up. I think he maybe is deputising for somebody he did want to speak.
Oh right. Councillor Cunningham?
Yes, thank you Chair. I was trying to draw the attention of Martin to Matthew to the fact that I was also here at the time. And also I wish to give the apologies of councillor Burgess from Littleton and Hurstock Parish Council.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't think my mic was on then. Thank you very much councillor Cunningham, Mr Mayor. Lovely to have you with us. Okay, we now move on to the apologies. Are there any apologies, Matthew?
Just that one from councillor Burgess then Chair, thank you.
Thank you. And would any members who have an interest to declare, do so now in the chat function please? Nope, lovely. Ah, okay. We also have councillor Warwick with us now, which is excellent via her phone, thank you. And councillor Weir, you have an interest to declare?
I do, madam Chair. I declare a non prejudicial interest as a trustee of the University of Winchester Academy Trust, which runs the Barton Farm Academy. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, the minutes of the meeting of the 20th of October, they are on pages seven to 10 of the agenda pack. I'd like to move that those be agreed as a correct record of the meeting. Is that agreed? Oh councillor Porter.
Agreed.
Is that agreed?
It's agreed, but also I just wanted to raise, after you've done this topic, a matter of a personal interest as a county councillor.
Oh right.
I just didn't get to the button fast enough, sorry.
Yes, if you could use the chat function rather than hands, because we've monitored chat rather than hands, because hands get very confusing. But thank you very much councillor Porter, that interest will be noted. And I assume you've all agreed to the minutes. Yes, thank you. Okay, we now move on to public participation. And first of all, we have our standing contribution from the residents' association. So I think we have both Katerina Zucca and Mike Slin, who would like to address the forum. If you'd like to switch on your cameras and microphones and speak, that would be lovely. Thank you.
Good evening everyone and thank you for the opportunity and Happy New Year. I think if Mike agrees, I think he has more to tell us than myself this time. So I'd like to pass it on to him and then we can just discuss some details about our questions. Is that okay?
Absolutely fine. Thank you Katerina, thank you. Mike?
Thank you very much councillor Rutter. You've already stolen my fire, I think. This was councillor John Warwick, myself, our MP Steve Bryan, and councillor Rob Humby, the deputy lead for the county council. We had a very useful meeting and subsequent to that, as you will have seen councillor Rutter, we had an email from councillor Humby confirming that the county council is prepared to look at a signalised crossing on Andover Road at the rough location where we have asked for one. And it's going to take the county council some two months to look at the technical details and come back with a plan. That was the key message from his email. I did respond and say that that's great, but it would be really good if instead of proposing a 40 mile an hour limit over this section of Andover Road, it could be a 30 miles an hour limit. And he has responded subsequently to say, well initially, we're talking about a 40 mile an hour limit, but in the future it could well be depending on other proposals that are coming forward from the LCWIP. Thank you.
Thank you very much Mike. Okay lovely. Is that the end of the residents' association contribution for now? You're very welcome to ask questions during the meeting if any come up to you. Katerina?
Thank you. I was going to say, I think this time for us it's a matter of, we haven't submitted any questions as you noticed of course. And we sent you a big Excel file of outstanding or things that we're chasing. It's not all, they're not all items that we would want to present to this forum of course, but you see that there are plenty of items we'd like to get resolved at both ends of the site. We're not just talking about phase 1B. However, there are possibly some updates during the report, so if you're okay with that, can we get all the updates and if there's anything outstanding, I might flag it later?
That's absolutely fine. You're welcome to ask questions at the end of Chris's report particularly.
Chair, if I may, we have Ian Currie with us, who's the Technical Director for Cala. And there's nothing significant in my report about progress on site in terms of the things that the residents' association are looking for. So it might be worth, Ian, if he doesn't mind, just giving a very brief overview of the work schedule that they have for for what's going on at, well, both ends of the site.
Thank you Chris. Yep, we can ask Ian to do that at the end of your report perhaps? Or before that? No, before that?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, lovely. Shall we finish the public participation before we do that?
Fine, of course.
Yes. And Ian, you can address all the day-to-day issues that you know that the residents' association are concerned about. Thank you very much, thank you. Okay, so we also have Vicky Bolton and Chris Polter, who would like to speak. Are you both here? Yes. If you'd like to switch on your cameras and microphones and speak to the meeting now, please.
Thank you Chair. Vicky, if you're content, I'll go first with this.
Great Chris.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. Really, I've got four points that relate to the construction of the new shared cycleway and footway that's been constructed across Barton Meadows. And the four points really relate to the layout and the construction standards, and it's really seeking assurance and some areas of review from Winchester City Council about that. The first of them is about the surfacing. Having looked into it, there are certain standards set by Hampshire County Council and also British standards about the surface friction, the construction. And the question is really, could Winchester City Council get assurance from a named and qualified professional to show that the new track meets those standards? If it doesn't, if they could come back to the forum and just explain how it doesn't and why that would be appropriate, that would be appreciated. Secondly, at the junction of this new cycleway with Courtney Road, the cycleway terminates at a footpath before the cycleway, this new cycleway across the meadows is completed. It would be great if consideration could be given to terminating it at the roadway so that cyclists are able to get straight onto the road, rather than the terminus at the footpath, which means obviously cyclists cannot go onto it. So it seems that the layout which has changed from the original design could be improved. Linked to that, there are metal barriers that have gone in to, again, to discourage cyclists from going onto the footway. That goes against the current SASS Trans design guidance about having clear routes. And also it pushes cyclists, because I've witnessed it, off the path and onto the fields to get round them. And then the final point is relating to lockable vehicle bollards. This is a lovely wide tarmac surface. Winchester have kindly agreed to look into getting vehicle bollards at the Courtney Road end to control unauthorized vehicle access. The request is actually, they look at both ends and look at something around the railway arch as well to prevent cars from getting onto it and creating a public nuisance. So those are my four points. Thank you.
Thank you Chris. Chris Hughes, would you like to, I know that you have addressed several of these questions in emails, but if you could perhaps just let the forum know. First of all, could I just welcome the cycle path? I think it is great to see a quality cycle route from King's Barton across to Worthy Road. And I walked around Barton Meadows the other day and the only non-muddy bit was actually the new shared cycle path. And I was very grateful for it then. But Chris, if you could report back, thank you.
Certainly Chair. Firstly, apologies if I break up slightly, my internet seems to be playing up at the one time I certainly didn't want it to. So just in order of the questions, the surface friction question, I'm still waiting for an answer on that. The works are being carried out by qualified people. The groundworks team are the people that build the roads on King's Barton. So I don't have any qualms about the quality of it, but I've asked for the surface friction figure to be provided and I'll pass that on as and when I get it. The termination at the roadway, having been on-site and visited it, and Viv may wish to chip in as well, Viv Hill from Cala, the logical place it seemed to me on-site when I was there to terminate that route, as it is a pedestrian and cycle route as well, was at the pavement. It's a logical place for cyclists to then go onto the road and carry on their journey, but then also for pedestrians to carry on walking. I understand that it is a terminus, so there may be no great harm in moving it down to the road. But just the principle of it seemed to be, rather than having a gap at the end of a pavement, which people would be walking along initially and then having to step onto the road and then continue their journey that way, just didn't seem to make logical sense when you're on it. Because inevitably there would be a desire line created across the line from the pavement onto the path, which is the reason why we agreed that it should join up to the path. That kind of ties into the question about the metal barriers as well. So where the end of the cycle path joins onto the pavement, there is effectively a blind corner which is caused by a hedge as you come round the corner and onto the pavement. Now, I met the gentleman that lives on the end house and he had significant concerns about the fact that when he's using his driveway, he doesn't want people flying around that corner on their bikes and directly into his driveway. I suspect if you're an adult, it may not be blind, because you can stand on your pedals and see over and see what's going on. But for younger people, it definitely would be. I appreciate the guidance that SASS Trans have about continuous routes. And as a cyclist, I understand the frustration that cycle barriers cause. They're not ideal, but I think in this instance it's a safety issue and I wouldn't really be happy with that route being open for kids to either run or cycle in front of this man's driveway. Notwithstanding, it's a limited number of vehicle movements that he has across his drive every day. But it's a risk that didn't appear to me or indeed Cala worth taking. I'm happy to take guidance from the forum if they disagree with that, but that's the reason why they were put in. In terms of the vehicle, the locking bollards, yeah, I understand that a couple of vehicles have already tried to get into King's Barton by going down that path. Delivery drivers generally, I'm told, who will, I'm sure we've all witnessed, will take the shortest possible short route to any destination that they're going to. There's an issue inside King's Barton that has that as well. Yeah, it's astonishing what people will do to cut a few seconds off their journey. And I agree, and the Wildlife Trust agree that a bollard or two or however many it takes to make that area closable to traffic is needed. So Cala are looking into that for us at the moment and I'll report back as soon as I have an answer on what that's going to look like. I know Mr Polter identified his preference of a type of bollard. We'll see what we can do to get that delivered.
Great, thank you very much Chris. We do have councillor Hiscock, who is one of the local councillors, present this evening. I invited councillor Hiscock to come along. Did you want to make any contribution to this discussion councillor Hiscock at this point?
Well, not really. I've spoken to Chris about it as well and to, oh, I can't remember, no, the resident, Chris, they're both Chris's, sorry, that's what's confusing. And it's a tricky one here, because you've got what people would like and you've got what other people with more experience have also suggesting is good. I must say, I do have some sympathy with the idea that if you're going to bring people round a corner, it's best not to do it straight into somebody's drive. That's really all I can say that's got any sense on this. I wasn't here specifically for that actually, I'd say more to talk about other items. So you caught me a bit on the hop on that. But it's a bit contentious. It's always going to be contentious. I don't know if there's a right or a wrong answer to this one. I think really the thing to do is to get the job finished, while we can still do so, in my view.
Thank you councillor Hiscock. Councillor Todd, you wanted to ask a question?
Yeah, I'm actually the county councillor for that particular area. The boundary is Worthy Road. And I suppose my question is, probably since the design was agreed, LTN 120 has come out. And is the proposal consistent with LTN 120? And if not, can it be checked? Because really, probably in terms of, which is the government's new guidance on cycle infrastructure. And I think it has views on the priority of of cycle infrastructure versus cars. So maybe that could be checked as well?
Thank you.
Sorry councillor, yeah. Mr Polter's already pointed it out to me. It's the conflict between the driveway and the blind corner that still concerns me, because the government guidance will tell us that the barriers are not the most sensible solution for cyclists. But on-site, when you stand there, the logic of it is that it would be, it's a potentially dangerous situation to have people come around and run into a driveway.
Is it possible to look at moving the entry along?
Yeah, but for the same reason.
Yeah, LTN 120 would say use some imaginative thinking to try and find a way past it. The obvious is, is it an option to move the corner?
It is an option to move the corner, but for the reasons I outlined earlier about creating a new path across that area that wasn't then the path, it seemed like the logical place to, for the new path to terminate and carry on with the pavement.
Okay, we're going to look into this a little bit further, I believe. I think Vicky, you've got something you'd like to contribute?
I've gone now, now I'm back. Yeah. Slightly moving on from that cycle path to another one, there is a commitment to link that cycle path over the meadows that joins Courtney Road to the rest of the cycle network on the Worthy Road. And the cycle path on the Worthy Road, as you'll know, is on the other side of the road. And I would like to urge councillors and the council to look again at having a proper signalled crossing on the Worthy Road as well as the one on the Andover Road. Without such a crossing, the cycle path that we've been talking about just links two housing estates. With it, it links the whole of King's Barton and indeed Hurstock all the way down to the cathedral in a safe, low-traffic foot and cycle network. I recognise Chair that you might feel that this relates to a point on the agenda item, but I thought I could probably just say it quickly.
Thank you Vicky. Actually, it is in the letter that I originally sent from the forum, from the last meeting of the forum, to councillor Humby. He doesn't commit to that crossing sadly yet, but we're working on it.
No, I saw the letter and I guess my pushback is that he's based the decision on the number of footfalls as it stands. And that's before the cycle path. And also, if you don't, if you build it, they will come. If you don't have a safe infrastructure, it's no good counting people, because they won't use it if they don't feel safe and comfortable.
No, absolutely agree with you. And we are trying to get that message across. And I think that will come up again later in the meeting, but thank you very much. Okay, thank you Chris and thank you Vicky for your contributions, very much appreciated. So councillor Hiscock, did you want to raise something else at this point?
Well actually, I was really just wanting to talk about that crossing that councillor Humby, that's the one on the Worthy Road. I was disappointed with councillor Humby's response really. And I agree with what Vicky Bolton's saying, is that if you don't build it, it's going to be hard to see how you're going to get people crossing there. And it's a shame really, because in some ways it negates building the rest of the footpath all the way across Barton Farm to a point which just falls off a cliff. I think it's disappointing that it's going to be regarded as something which is, maybe not sometime in due course. I think we really need to be thinking about the whole business of cycling across that area. And just allowing a barrier to remain like that in that crucial place, I think is unhelpful.
Thank you councillor Hiscock, and I think the forum would entirely endorse that view. Now, Ian Currie, I believe you're going to give us an update on the situation as Cala sees it with various bits of infrastructure that you're dealing with. Perhaps you'd like to do that now?
I can do that. Thank you very much. Good evening everybody. My first time at this forum, but if you bear with me.
You're very welcome and Happy New Year teacher.
That's very kind. So let's start with phase 1B initially. So I'm aware that there has been a number of concerns raised by residents on a number of issues on phase 1B. And I have organised a fortnightly meeting with technical, commercial and construction teams on the site to talk through and prepare a schedule of all the things that we believe are not as they should be, things that need sorting out and any remedial works that needs to be done. So this is already started to happen. So this was set up probably beginning of November, late October. So as with all these things, they take a little while to get geared up and happen. And Christmas hasn't helped and neither has the Covid situation. However, we've made a number of inroads on quite a few issues. I've got a big schedule that's about 30 pages long of lots of items. And I know particular ones of concern for people are streetlights. My understanding, and I have been informed, that all the streetlights are now working, bar one. Be interested to hear if that is incorrect. I've had guys walking around there at night to check, so I'm hoping that is correct. And there are a number of other things on soft landscaping, a little bit of hard landscaping and other elements that are in the process of being sorted. These are not overnight fixes, I'm afraid, but I want to assure the forum and residents that this is not something that we're just walking away from. We need to make sure that it is right. So that is what we're doing. Probably another significant point to raise is, Probably another significant point to raise is road surfacing. We're aware that the final wearing course is not on the roads currently. And certainly not on the adopted, or the roads to be adopted. Unfortunately, that's going to be some time before we get that resolved. That is not anybody's particular fault. We're working with Hampshire County Council to get these matters resolved. We've got to go through various approval processes. There seems little point in spending money on putting wearing courses down that will then have to be dug up to do some curb replacements, curb remedials, manhole resetting, that sort of thing. It's important that we don't then put a wearing course down and then it looks like a patchwork quilt after we've finished. The important thing is the wearing course goes down right at the very end. So we're aware that there are areas that look unsightly. This is not unusual in big developments like this. It needs to be done in the right way. But we have made sure that areas are safe. So if residents are aware that there are certain areas that are not safe, then we're very happy for them to make contact either through Chris or councillor Iredale or other methods so that we can be informed and then we can deal with it straight away. And the final point, really, just on that lamp column, I forgot to say that that is, that the final one is being fixed. We're waiting for the company to turn up and sort it. It's not just a lamp and it's just not a connection. It's something a bit more significant than that, that I'm told. So it's not just a quick fix. It needs to be looked at in a bit more detail. So happy to take questions or if anybody's got any concerns or queries of what I've said. I'm aware that just for councillor Iredale's point of view, I know she's emailed me on a number of issues. I've got to respond to her on a couple of things that I will do. I was just collating some information in order to give her a comprehensive response. And just finally, on the play area on 1B that I think people will be concerned about. I think everybody would agree it's significantly better than it was earlier or in late last year. So we believe it's now pretty much complete. I think there's probably a little bit of painting of railings of remedial works. Other than that, we are wanting to open it as soon as possible. However, because of the rain and because we've turfed it all, it would seem crazy to open it and then have to close it a couple of weeks later to replace all the turf. That isn't the right thing to do. We're aware that it's late and we're sorry for that, but we need to make sure that the turf will stand the children running on it. So we are monitoring that on a weekly basis and we will advise as soon as we can when we can open it. But that is being monitored all the time. So moving on to 1A, I don't think there's any particular issues that I'm aware of. There's a process again of roads, wearing courses and the like. The same thing applies to 1As as 1B. If there are particular issues on 1A that people need to make me aware of, I'm very happy to listen. Other than that, not much else to say. So.
Thank you, Mr. Currie. Thank you. I think we have a couple of questions for you. I have had councillor Cunningham as the mayor of Winchester on standby all year to wait to open the play area. I don't know whether we're actually going to be able to manage to open it within his term of office, which ends, well, we're not entirely sure when. I'm in the middle of May usually. We'll have to wait and see. Councillor Porter, you had a request to speak. And then we have Mel, who'd like to contribute. Thank you.
Yes. Can I ask, Mr. Currie, and welcome to meetings. It's really good to see you here. The surface of the play area is grass and I appreciate there are some items there that will get perhaps less wear. But there are items that are likely to be more, to get more worn and they will end up as a mud bath quite quickly over the year or a dust bath in the summer. And I wondered whether you have thought about the number of people that will be, are likely to be using it. We've got a lot of children around that area. And whether long-term, it may be that this has to be resurfaced with some more permanent surface?
I know many play areas with grass. I'm not aware that this would be a particular issue here. Where the swings are and particular areas of significant hard-wearing areas, there's rubber matting that has gone down which has grass that grows through it. So it's matting that's got holes in it for the grass to grow through. So so that is in locations where you get particularly hard wear. The rest, I think, once the grass beds down and it's regularly cut, I think it would be the same as many other play areas around the borough and indeed, around the country. So there would be no other surface that is being proposed to go on there now.
Well, I hadn't seen the surface underneath the swing, so that's useful to know. So it is a hard-use area.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mel? You had a question for Mr. Currie?
I can't turn off my, it says my video sharing is disabled by the administrator, but you can hear me though.
Yes, we can hear you.
So first, sorry. So hi Ian, thank you for joining us and it's nice to finally meet you all over video. So firstly, I just wanted to say thank you and that you've considered the the email request that I've sent to you and I'll await your response. The other issue was with regards to the playground. The wooden apparatus. So our concern at the parish council is that when the grass is cut, when the grass strip, when the grass is cut, that the grass trimmers may strip the protective coating off. And we have, I've spoken to Chris about it, about having some protective material put around the base of the apparatus.
Can I just interrupt you there? Sorry. Chris has spoken to me about that. We've, I've asked my technical manager to speak to the play equipment manufacturer and ask whether or not that is required. My view is if it is required, they should have supplied it and we'll ask them to supply it. If it's not required, then we'll let you know that it's not required. So.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much.
No problem at all.
Thank you.
Councillor Wick, do we have any other questions that you can see?
Katerina has got her hand up and Viv Hill. Whether Viv wanted to reply to something earlier on or whether we take Katerina's and then Viv can reply after.
Yes, let's do it that way round. Katerina, if you want to ask a question, then Viv, you can sort of sum up on behalf of Carla, can't you? Thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you. Hi Ian, finally we meet. I don't think we've exchanged much correspondence. Mel has been so efficient with this. I have a couple of questions about the things you've updated us on. And yeah, thank you for the streetlights. It was a sudden realisation last weekend that the one I have closest to my house finally worked, but I haven't been able to check the others. So it's really good news that finally people have this issue sorted. Regarding the road surfacing, you said, so I just wanted to point out that there are some areas where the gap, the drop between the two levels of surfaced or finished presumably a road and unfinished is quite significant and there can be wear and tear, a higher wear and tear for tyres, noise. So I was wondering if there's any chance you could just put some tarmac to fill in these drops where they are significant. Although I realise that doing the job once, if it has to be redone, would be really not the right thing to do for your company.
Yeah. So if there are significant drops, as you say, we can certainly feather that out with some tarmac. Got no issue with that. If you, if you wanted to email me separately to let me know where those areas are, I'm very happy to get the ground worker to go and look at that and get that sorted. Just as a point on that, in a bizarre way, it does help in that difference in level because it does slow the traffic down. So that's probably not a bad thing. And wear and tear on tyres, I would say that that is insignificant. But I do understand that if there's a big jolt on the car, one, people are probably driving faster than they should. So we don't want to make it too smooth for people in that location. But I'm very happy to look at, you know, feathering the tarmac out to make sure it's not significant that's damaging no point at all.
That's great. Thank you. Could you also be more specific about the soft and hard landscaping that you mentioned? I know that some plants and trees should be replaced where they were dead. And I'm aware that the warm season is going to, is just around the corner. So is that going to be done soon?
Okay, I love your optimism that the warm season is just around the corner. But yeah, so certainly the right planting season. What we've done, we've had a survey done, a schedule undertaken, so we know which plants need to be replaced. We know areas of topsoil that needs to be looked at. And so the idea is that we get that in the spring as soon as we can, as soon as the right time for planting. So and we rely on our landscapers to tell us when that right time is. So it is definitely on my list and I've got a full schedule and a full report. So we're going through that now. So it is in hand.
Okay, I had heard it was November, the right time for planting, but I'm no expert. I'm just.
It is for trees. It is, the right time is sort of November for trees, but perhaps if we all remember last March, it was quite warm actually, wasn't it? And early April. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ian. Sorry, did you have one more?
Yes, I have one more. The street furniture, dog bins, litter bins, benches and grit bins, which I've noticed are in Phase 1A, but we have never had in Phase 1B. So please don't forget about us and when can you do this?
Okay, just a quick note on the grit bins. Again, something that Chris has already spoken to me about. So I've organised a grit bin to go on the end, I can't remember, Manly Road, is it, where you've got that, where it comes down onto the the main spine road, as I would call it. So we're going to get a grit bin installed there. Just as a note, we have no obligation to provide grit bins. Grit bins were provided on Phase 1, probably as much for the site team as for residents. It's not something that we would normally put in. And to be fair, once we put it in, when the roads get adopted, it could be that the county council require us to remove them because they're either on highway land or they're not, you know, otherwise may have to maintain them or whatever. So as a temporary, short-term to medium-term measure, we're very happy to put the grit bins in. Once we've done that, we'll fill them up. But then it will be an obligation for the residents' management company to keep them topped up. So we'll fill them up once. And then it will be down to the management company to continue, you know, to keep them filled. Street furniture and the like, that's all, again, all on my list, my schedules of what needs to be done and when. My view is that 90% of the things, maybe even more, 95% of the issues on my list will be completed by early spring. So that's the target I'm giving my team. We don't want it to drag on. We just want to get it done. And we want residents to be smiling and waving at us rather than just ridiculous. So.
Thank you very much, Ian. Thank you very much, Katerina. Viv, did you want to contribute?
Thank you very much, Chair. Chairman, I will contribute ever so briefly. It was just really to add on the, add a little bit of detail on some of the play areas. I know that there were lots of questions about the surface treatment, the type of material, the equipment, what it's made of. I mean, just to remind the forum, this is one of four, this is the smallest of the four play areas that are going, that were due to deliver across the wider site. So there'll be, there'll be a number of other multi-use surface areas, one of which forms part of the Phase 2A application, which is due for determination imminently. So that will give opportunities for children to play on a multi-use surface. The play area in Phase 1B is the smallest of the four and is for the younger children, so perhaps less heavy-footed than some of the older children who like to be using some of the other players from more sort of kickabout spaces. So something we'll monitor. We are hoping to involve, through discharge of various planning conditions for Phase 2A, the wider community of Kings Barton, engage in their opinion about what we should be putting in in some of the future designs of the play areas. So a lot of the comments that, or concerns that people may have about the one we're delivering at the moment, we can perhaps look to address in the future through the redesign or implementation of future players across the site. So it's, everything's up for grabs on future play areas. Let's hope we can make the best of the one we've got in Phase 1B, get it right and get it open. I think that's everyone's priority.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hill. Thank you. Councillor Porter, did you want to contribute at this stage?
Yes, thank you. Going back to the grit bins, et cetera. Of course, once the road is adopted, then the county council could be asked to supply a grit bin on that route. And also to have the road gritted. And I think that's been one of the issues with the central reservation, that that puts that at risk as have other roads around the county. So I just wanted to ask Mr. Currie, has that been part of the conversation when discussing the final design of the new, the main spine road? And also, have you got any idea of the likely time when that road would be adopted? And so how long will the grit need to last? That's the question.
I haven't had any discussions with the council regarding grit bins. That was just Chris asking me and out of the goodness of my heart, I said I would provide a grit bin. So it really is just as simple as that. And that's something that, you know, we're aware that, you know, just as a, you know, being slightly flippant, but just something that we can provide for the residents. So so it is literally just as simple as that.
Conversation about. I was more concerned about the plan for snow clearance as well, because if you've got anything like tables or anything else, that creates a problem for snow clearance. And I wondered if that's been part of the conversation.
Yeah, we've had, we've had no conversation about the short-term element of snow clearance. Certainly, long-term discussions about speed tables and the like to make sure that they are able for a design so a snowplow can go over them. That's certainly discussions that we've had. If that answers your question. So regarding adoption of the road, it is a very complex situation here because it's been done in segments and quite challenging. We have regular meetings with Jo Holmes and her team. They're currently going very well. So we have regular meetings to talk about the adoption process and how best the best way to get as much of this adopted as quickly as possible. But you know, we're talking months and years rather than days and weeks. So it's a long-term thing that we need to deal with this. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that question, councillor Porter. Thank you, Mr. Currie. That's great. In fact, we're very lucky. We have Jo Holmes with us this evening. I don't know if you wanted to just mention, just comment on that point, particularly now, Jo, before you give your report later on?
Yes, I can just build on what Ian responded to there. First of all, I suppose hello and this is my first forum, so.
Good evening. You're very welcome. Thank you for coming along.
Not a problem. Yeah, so just to build on that, the main spine road is a Priority 1 route. So once it is adopted, it will obviously be served by as a winter salting route. So it will obviously be covered under the normal maintenance regime. Obviously, with regards to salting bins elsewhere, I think that'd be a matter between the maintenance companies and the different phases of the development. And I suppose just to build on the adoption strategy and what Ian has said there is that we're working together and quite, it's quite a complex arrangement with regards to getting that road adopted and progressing with getting that road adopted. But it's progressing well and we're focusing on Phase 1A and the design audit there. And once we've resolved all issues there, that model will be used for the remainder of the spine road and help unlock the adoption of the full spine road. And so yes, it's, it's difficult, but we're getting there. That's probably all I have to say at the moment.
Lovely. Thank you very much. Thank you. I will come on to your full report from Hampshire Highways after Chris's report. So I think, I think we've done with questions and public participation and the report from Carla. So now we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Section 106 Schedule and Triggers. And this is a report from Chris. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you, Chair. Just like to clarify, I'm sure Jo is sitting there panicked at the moment. She's not. the moment. She's not actually giving a report as such. Ian Curry is going to talk through some of the adoption process issues, and then Jo is here to answer questions, which I hope reassures her before she runs away.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
The, the section 106 table that I've put in the report will become a standing item. So members can monitor exactly where we are in terms of the various obligations. For whatever reason, when this, when councillor, well, not councillor, Eric Pickles, who is the relevant minister at the time, approved it, he split it into two separate section 106 agreements. So we have one for, between Winchester City Council and the developer, and one between Hampshire County Council and the developer. The first one isn't labelled, unfortunately, I accidentally deleted that. But the first set of obligations are under the Winchester City section 106 obligation. And then the second larger set of obligations is for Hampshire County Council, covering things like the education payments and highways agreements and various other matters. We are currently with Carla and colleagues at Hampshire County Council discussing a deed of variation to this section 106. And this relates, Viv will correct me, but I think it's solely relating to highways obligations at the moment. Now, there is no intention, obviously, to remove any of those obligations. Carla are committed to fulfilling all of them. But there are some slightly odd triggers that appeared in that original document about all agreements having to be done before the occupation of 200 houses, which were obviously passed now. So technically, Carla are in breach of some of those obligations. But they're, they're in breach because they. At the time, because, for instance, connecting the middle section of the road, that hasn't been fully designed up yet. So there is no chance that Carla could actually fulfil that obligation of having the technical agreement in place before 200 occupations. So we're looking at moving it more towards a phased delivery structure. So when that phase comes forward for approval, that's when the trigger will be met and delivered, rather than a set number of dwellings, which, which doesn't really fit the way in which Kings Barton is being delivered. So the yellow section that I've highlighted within the document is other things that we are talking about rejigging in terms of delivery triggers. And I don't really have that much more to say on this, unless there's any specific questions from members. It's a fairly dull table. I will try and make it more interesting and clearer for the next meeting. Apologies, I did it in a bit of a rush. But I'll try and clarify exactly how it's all set out and tidy it up a bit for members so they can keep an eye on things. And obviously, I'll report back at each meeting whether anything's changed or how the deed of variation conversation is going on. Related to that, Chair, if I may, it may be worth bringing perhaps Ian into talking a bit about the highways agreement process. I know he's touched on it in his early lengthy report. Thank you, Ian. But he may just talk a bit more about the way that we're going about this, and then perhaps Jo can answer any specific questions. But I know there may be a perception this is taking a long time, and it is, but we are genuinely working quite hard to get this all sorted out, because we all want a successful community. And that a big part of this is the highway that's going through the middle. So we're just trying to make sure that everything is correct and all the ducks are lined up for Hampshire and the residents. So I'll just pass to Ian, just to talk briefly, if you don't mind, Chair, about those highway agreements.
You, Chris. Ian, do you want to? I do have members with questions, but perhaps with you.
Do you just want me to quickly? Yeah, I'll just quickly build on what Chris has said. So again, regular meetings with Jo and her team, we're looking, we've obviously got, without boring people too much about section agreements for highways, so there's section 38 agreements for estate roads, but the main spine road, if you like, through the centre of the site, which is covered under a section 278 agreement. And we're working with Jo's team to finalise the details of that. And as she said earlier, what we're doing at phase 1A will then set the precedent for the rest of the site. We are looking to commence the next part of the road. So that's moving on from 1A along to 2A, which is a bit further up the, to the hill, if you like, to the ridge there. So that's the next phase we'll be doing. And that should start relatively soon, certainly getting the line and level correct and start putting what we call curb braces. And hopefully by the time we get to doing all the detail of that, if you like, the principle would have been set for phase 1A, which we can just follow through. It is our intention where, and certainly what we're discussing with the council is to try and get that spine road in as quickly as possible. That's a, you know, huge cash injection that we have to do to make that happen. But it's our wish to make it happen because it works for residents, it works for us, and it works for the wider community. So that is something that we're looking to do. But as everybody will be aware, building roads isn't quick and easy. It does have its challenges, there's all the drainage services, all those issues. Covid doesn't help either. But it's certainly our intention to get that road in as quickly as possible. Again, working with council in finding ways that we can get as much of it adopted as quickly as possible. So that's the process, and that's what we're trying to achieve.
Thank you, Mr Curry. Councillor Weir, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And it's on to my hobby horse again, but this has been quite helpful to know, get a better understanding of where the spine road is going, because we clearly do have a real issue for our residents in 1A getting up to, up to the school and the access to the school. Obviously, there are wider issues for other people accessing the school. And I don't know when you were last there, Ian, but that is the state of the road at the moment into the school. I'm sorry, I can't get you a clearer picture of it. And we haven't got any children, well, barely any children going along there. But it's very heavily used now by walkers going in there. And I, over the past four months, have watched parents try to push, push chairs and walk toddlers, young children along there to get them to school from, from phase 1A and from hairstock. I'm just wondering, you know, the spine road will help obviously relieve that problem. Is there anything we can do possibly with Hampshire to put some sort of even temporary servicing in there that will get us through to when, to the point where A, the spine road is completed, and B, we can get other options for parents bringing people to school, other than the residents of 1B? Thank you.
Chair, if I may, I think that's probably one for me rather than Ian.
Okay, Chris.
The, the route along the ridge is something that councillor Porter and I have been discussing with various people from Hampshire County Council to try and get something sorted. We spoke to colleagues in education, and they didn't feel it was a priority at the moment. So we're, we're working with colleagues from Hampshire County Council to see if there's anything we can do to get that surface to the school, if not further surfaced. Again, it's, nothing's agreed at the moment, but we are trying very hard to get anything done, to get it sorted out. Councillor Porter may wish to add to that, and I'm not sure.
Councillor Porter, did you have a contribution to make about?
Yes.
The footpath of the school?
I think we've moved some considerable way in the attitude towards this between last autumn and this spring. And I think it's a matter of seeing the route that Carla are building in the tarmac path across the, across from one road to another. We have always talked about it as a, as a walking superhighway, really, a walk-in cycling superhighway. And I know that your wish as well is to make sure that the, the route is suitable for buggies. I think that the county council is rapidly coming to the same conclusion, which is encouraging. We've just got to find a way of funding that now. So I think we have moved a long way. We're trying to have meetings on a very regular basis to see if we can get to the point where we can see that join happening. Councillor Weir, I'm sure that we will make sure that the whole of Barton Farm Forum knows, or Kings Barton Farm Forum knows, if we finally get that agreement.
Thank you very much, councillor Porter. I think it's absolutely essential that some sort of surface is put down to the school before the school reopens. And I think that, you know, as a forum, at the very least, we should get some sort of commitment from the county and Carla to say that muddy, that knee-deep muddy path will have some sort of permeable surface over it that, that, that will stop, you know, which will allow parents, you know, non-muddy access to the school, because at the moment, it's absolutely disgraceful.
Exactly. The quicker we get the Carla Holmes path to a point, and then we can say, okay, finish the gap. That would be really helpful, Mr Curry.
Mr Curry?
Yeah, just on that. I mean, we talked with Chris quite a bit on this, and Carla are happy to help where we can. But, but it's not our obligation to resurface Hampshire County Council's footpaths. So, so that's the, that's the balance we've got to try and get here. So, and, you know, we're working with Chris and Jo as well, trying to find routes through and looking at timescales. And we understand all of that. I think the other thing that probably is probably worth saying, I'm not trying to be flippant here, but, but we're also trying to build as well. And there's dangers with that, and there's, you know, site security, site safety, you know, it's not always possible for residents to get from point A to point B in the quickest route, just because that's the desire line. There are, there are a number of obstacles that could prevent that. And that is, you know, a huge building site, building hundreds of houses. And we have to absolutely, public safety is paramount. So we've got to be careful that it's not, you know, we don't put the public at risk, taking them on routes that could be potentially dangerous. So again, working with Chris, I don't know whether Chris wants to add anything to that, but working with Chris to try and find ways and make it happen as quickly as possible.
Yeah, I'm happy to. I think that the connection that councillor Porter was referring to is the map in my, the next section of the report shows the link that Carla are putting in, and it effectively joins up to the right way. But as Ian said, there's no obligation on Carla through the planning process to surface that route. But the logic of it is irrefutable, when you see it on a piece of paper, that it will be one full connected route. So I think that would be a very useful thing to, to use when we're in our discussions with Hampshire colleagues, which we are doing already.
Thank you very much. Well, I think, I think the forum just basically wants decent footpaths for, for parents and residents across, across the site. And if they have to be moved because of building works, I think the new paths should be equally, even if it's only a bit of hardcore, they should be, they should be surfaced in some way so that people don't have to struggle through ankle-deep mud. Okay, I think we note your schedule, section 106 schedule and triggers for Chris.
Before you move on, councillor Scott.
Oh, yes, councillor, yes, councillor Scott, sorry. Thank you. You have a question?
You can call me Mr Scott if you want, or councillor Scott, doesn't matter, Chair. I'll answer to anything. Chris is obviously now talking about an awful lot of technical stuff with county council and Carla. Last time we had a forum, we discussed the community development element of a role going into Barton Farm. And Chris was, with his line manager, put himself forward for that role. We're obviously into a very sort of particular time of trying to get things firmed up technically wise. Chris, what is the sort of scenario between this new role, as in the community development aspect of moving forward, doing consultation with the residents in Barton Farm? Obviously, we have some residents coming to the Barton Farm Forum, but not, not every resident is obviously in attendance tonight. So it'd be interesting to know his aspect of how he foresees the community development aspect moving forward in Barton Farm, as it develops itself as a, as a, as a good community and resident base. And to his aspect of actually trying to also find quality time to liaise with the likes of Carla Holmes and county council over these very technical issues. Thank you.
Chris?
Thanks, councillor. As, as you'll know better than anyone, it's been quite a frustrating time for someone that's working in a community. So it's basically all virtual at the moment. And I admit that much beyond the resident association, the time now a member of, and being part of their WhatsApp group, and being copied into various emails, there's, there's little that I've done to engage the wider community, which is a fair point, actually. And just letting people know, there's the Facebook group, obviously, for the community. But I think you're right. I mean, there might be, when we can actually meet face to face, I'd really like to go and start knocking on people's doors and seeing if they're interested in talking to me. And if not, putting newsletters out. I am in liaison with the housing association. So there's obviously around 40% of the houses at one, well, the whole site are going to be affordable units. And at the northern end, Vivid are happy to have me to contribute to their newsletter that's going to be forthcoming. So that, that covers quite a lot of the social houses, anyway. And you're right, I think there's probably more work to do in terms of the private sector housing. And I'm more than happy to seek your expertise on the best ways of doing that, because I know you know better than most people that how to engage with the wider community.
Thanks, Chris. More than happy. My previous past life was community development worker, so more than happy to liaise with you, if that helps. Thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Chris. Okay, are we, are we done now with that section? I think, I think perhaps if we could ask that, for the next, since that's going to be a regular part of the agenda for the next forum and so on, perhaps we could highlight any areas where we are falling behind in the section 106 schedule, and have some answers as to why that's happening for the next forum. That would be very helpful. Councillor Todd and councillor Horrell, I see you both have questions. Are they on this section 106?
Yeah. Might. But there are some obligations, most obviously relating to the park and ride within the Secretary of State's decision notice. For example, the park and ride is triggered on 650 houses. And I just think for completeness, if we're listing all the obligations that are sort of defined through the planning process, strictly the, the Secretary of State decision, I don't think is a section 106. I think it's something else. But it would still be useful to have that and any others that I might have missed in reading the decision notice on the list as well.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Chris, would that be possible?
Yeah, it's, it's as simple as basically being a planning consent. So I'm happy to list out the various obligations that are listed under that consent. Some of them are quite wide ranging, but yeah, I'll happily stick that into a table as well.
Yeah, I think it's the triggered ones, which would be useful for people.
Yeah. Sure.
Thank you. Councillor Horrell, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you for allowing me to answer. It was relating to this particular part of the agenda, and whether we could have more of a traffic light system to sort of flag up, because there are lots of decisions that are sort of time constrained, or they were historical, but where the highlights and lowlights are, I think that would be helpful to everyone. So, Chris, a bit more work for you, but actually it might just help us to focus on the things that we all need to be grasping. There's obviously a lot of dialogue going on between the various meetings, just to ensure that we're all suitably up to date on the conversations that have been going on. Because if you were listening in this evening, with all due respect, Chair, and you're not close to this, you would not know about some of the issues that are being raised, because they're not being sort of prefaced particularly, in the sense of the, the conversations that are being had. So if that could be done, Chris, in your report, I think that would help us all to give a better contribution. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrell. And I think that, that reflects what I was saying, Chris, earlier about identifying areas that we need to be concerned about in these triggers. So I think that the traffic light suggestion is a very good one. Thank you very much for that, councillor Horrell. If we could, we could aim for something like that for the next meeting. Shall we move on to the highways update, which I think is a verbal update? I think we've essentially gone through this. But Ian, is there anything you wanted to add? And Chris, Chris first?
Yes, I was going to say, unless there's any other questions about the highways, I'm not sure there's much else to update. If there's any specific questions, I'm sure Ian and Jo would be happy to answer them. But I did promise Jo we would let her go as early as possible, if not.
So members, questions on highways and, uh, the roads and, I mean, I, I've got a question. I mean, I know it's ongoing, but, but we really do need to see the, the cycle and footpath linked up, that, that we've had this fabulous new, nearly finished new site, shared cycle route across the meadows going down to Worthy Lane. But there's, there's no commitment from the County Council to put in a, a crossing to, to link that up. Uh, Joe, perhaps you could, um, tell us that, uh, that that's being looked at again?
Um, hi. Yes, I believe it's being looked at and I hate to be slowkey-shouldered in any way. Um, but it is dealt with by a different team, um, that would look at the feasibility of, um, the crossings. Um, and they look at PV squared values, which is, uh, to do with the number of vehicles that use certain roads and the number of, um, pedestrians or cyclists that are likely to use that. And they also look at, um, forecast figures as well. So they'll look at growth figures and potential users from the development. Um, so I do understand that is being looked at, but I would hate to speak on behalf of another, um, party. So apologies for that.
Was there anything else that you wanted to add to, to what Ian or, or Chris have been saying about highways and the, the main, the main route through the, the, the development and so on?
Um, no, just, um, really to reiterate, um, that we are working hard, um, between all parties to, to resolve the final sort of issues that have been holding up the agreements and the technical approvals to date. Um, and, um, like I said, we're concentrating on, uh, resolving phase one and getting the, um, uh, the technical approvals, um, finalized for that section. That will then become the template for the other areas that are, are coming forward. With regards to the agreements, um, we're going to, we're, we're looking at the, uh, legal agreements that will obviously allow then the subsequent parcels to be, uh, adopted. And we're trying to look at the clauses in those agreements to make sure that it won't hold up subsequent adoptions of roads due to maintenance periods on the main spine road, um, which I suppose is just to, to, um, reassure people that, you know, we're, we're trying to put a lot of effort in now to ensure that when things are progressing further down the line, that it will progress well and a lot easier. Uh, so things are taking a lot longer now, but it's a lot of work upfront, which can then be rolled out for future development, uh, future agreements for the development. So I think that's probably everything I want to, to highlight.
Thank you very much. I think we have councillor Porter with a contribution, maybe a question?
Yes, thank, thank you. My question is that, uh, a certain section of it is highlighted in bright yellow. Uh, I don't know if you can see that, Joe, you can see the highlights, but, um, it particularly relates to Wellhouse Lane Junction, uh, to, sorry, not Wellhouse Lane Junction, Wellhouse Lane Bridge, um, which does not seem to have any reason why that work couldn't go ahead. Um, it was due to be done on the 200th house. It's about traffic lighting a, a route. It's becoming increasingly busy, but interestingly, it's becoming increasingly busy with people walking under it with shopping bags and going along in bicycles. Uh, and it really does seem that we do need that, that traffic light system put in. And, uh, we're now probably three, nearer 300 houses. I wondered what the progress of that plan is as part of the total.
And so from, um, uh, a design audit perspective, we received a design audit now from the developer for Wellhouse Lane. We've had it for some time. Um, we've been progressing with a design audit check. Um, there was a lot of work undertaken upfront with regards to the ITS equipment. So this is the actual lights themselves, uh, and the phasing of those lights. Um, it's a slightly complicated, um, situation in the fact that, um, the, uh, Network Rail, the bridge is owned by Network Rail. So there's another party involved with regards to lighting itself under the bridge and connecting on to the railway bridge. So there's an agreement required, um, directly with them. Um, the other concern is obviously having a, uh, crossing under the railway bridge and having that set up before there's anywhere to go. Um, so ensuring that there's a footpath connecting in there from the development itself, uh, we wouldn't be able to open the, the, uh, lights until there's somewhere for those pedestrians and users to go. Um, so it does need to be tied in with the, the footpath, um, in, that would feed into phase four B. Um, so it needs to be sort of delivered in the correct order. The footpath would need to be delivered and then the, um, crossing, uh, and the, and the lights underneath the, uh, footbridge to make sure that those pedestrians that were guiding that way then have somewhere to go off of the highway. Um.
But at the moment they're using the highway to get through there. So actually, this does feel a bit like Groundhog Day, that we've been discussing this for about a year, possibly more. And I just really, I'm aware that also there's a land ownership issue on the west side of the railway line. But really, I think this forum would really appreciate knowing exactly when this work's going to be done and when it could actually be operational from. Uh, yeah, we are literally seeing many more people running, walking, cycling through that route, particularly just to go to the shops. And, um, it really, uh, food to a food shop. And it really does worry me that the number of people is increasing, but we still don't have a firm date by which this work can be, was, will be completed.
Um, I mean, Ian, um, may be able to comment on the land issue, um, and, um, but from a technical and agreements perspective, things are progressing well. With regards to a programme, we're not yet a, a position where we can book road space to actually physically undertake the works. Um, but, uh, the design consultants and researchers are working very closely to, to ensure that's progressed as soon as possible.
So, so is it, it, is it a matter for, uh, the Hampshire County Councils to contact Network Rail? Or is it a matter for Cala Homes to contact Network Rail?
So there is a document called a BAPA required, um, to allow this, the fixings of, um, the, the lights to, um, the bridge itself. Um, and I believe already, um, the design consultants hired by Cala have already contacted Network Rail. There's already been a liaison meeting between Hampshire, Design Consultants and Network Rail. Um, so the process really is driven by, uh, Cala and Design Consultants, but we are there to assist and help make that process as quick as possible because the assets that will be connected to the bridge will be Hampshire, um, street lighting that's adopted as part of the, the two seven eight agreement. So it's a, a multi-party.
I can, I can understand the difficulty. It's just, it feels like Groundhog Day. And I just wondered if anybody would like to try and reassure anybody that's walking from King's Barton and, and is walking that way because it's the obvious way for them, uh, and why that bridge hasn't yet got any traffic lights on it?
Yes, there's another issue with the traffic lights and the bridge, but Mister Curry, perhaps you'd like to contribute at this stage?
Yeah, not an awful lot of contribution from me here on this one. All I would say is that I think Joe and I will take this away and just see whether we can expedite this in any way. Um, I'm not sure of any particular land issues, but I'm, I, I don't deal with that directly. So I haven't been made aware of that. But I, I know technical details have been done. It's all gone to, to, to Joe's team. They're working hard in trying to resolve all these things. Joe is absolutely right. Working with Network Rail is never simple.
I know, it's not easy.
It just takes, takes months and months and months. Um, but, you know, that BAPA is, is, is being applied for, you know, we're all, the process is in hand. It's not that we're not sitting at the back here thinking, well, we must get on with that. It's all going ahead. So, so, uh, you know, from a, from an implementation point of view, uh, notwithstanding what Joe said about putting in, um, these lights and creating accesses going to nowhere. We've got to be mindful of that. But from an inflammation, implementation point of view, as soon as we get technical approval and the go ahead to, to, from the council to go, we're happy to go. There's nothing stopping that from our, our side of things.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's about booking road space and all that sort of thing. So that's, you know, standard highway works, but you know, um, as soon as we get the go ahead, we'll, we'll get on with it.
Thank you, Mister Curry. Thank you councillor Porter. Um, Joe, if I could just ask, um, you will probably remember we had a horrific bus crash at that bridge, um, in September. And, um, we asked at that point if it was possible to include, um, a over height warning sign in with the traffic lights. So because electricity is going to be there and lights are going to be there, if it was possible to have that, uh, in addition to the traffic lights. Has that, has that reached your, your area of concern? I mean, do you, do you know that that request has been put in? And is there any possibility that that can be realised, um, as part of this work? And also there is a new development on the left, um, where Wellhouse Cottage used to be. And we said, as the parish council suggested when that was being proposed, that there should be a footpath from the bridge along on the left-hand side of the road up to that new development and then through that development and up into the rest of King's Barton as a, as a preferred option, um, to, to the zigzag path that is on the plans at the moment as a, an easier and cheaper and quicker way of getting a, a cycle and, and walking path, um, safe from the road. Uh, is there any possibility of that happening?
So to take your first point, uh, we've got to go through the warning signs, um, for the, uh, bridge. Um, I have heard of the request. I know there's been a report into looking at, um, the accident and the, the issues that were encountered there. Um, I haven't had anything formally through, um, but as part of the, the normal design audit process, we look at accident and history and data. So it's just the normal design process that will pick up that that has happened. Um, additionally, we do something called a road safety audit, audit as part of the design process, which would look at the new design and, um, also what's existing and see if anything additional is requested and acquired. Um, I haven't seen the latest road safety audit pertaining to, um, this design, uh, but I know there's already, um, warning signs there. So whether a lit one has been already suggested as part of that process, I don't know at this meeting, but I can update, um, at the next meeting on that. On the second issue, I'm going to have to pass that over to Chris. Um, he probably looks like he knows, uh, more of it than I do.
Yeah. So, um, uh, you're referring councillor to the, um, the actual farm development, which is, is it six dwellings?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's, it's not many dwellings. So the, the consideration was how to connect to Barton Farm, because obviously that's important for that location, which for the benefit of.
Well, the consideration was both how to connect to Kings, to the rest of King's Barton, but also how to connect that small community back to Headborne Worthy and, and the route under the bridge and, and to have a safe footpath for them back.
So my understanding is that both those issues were considered during the, um, consent process. Um, and the discussion with the developer was that it wasn't reasonable to ask them to pay for the installation of a footpath of however many hundred metres from that development, which for the benefit of forum members is on the Wellhouse Lane, just to the north of Barton Farm. You, you'll be aware, there's a very small section of, um, land that wasn't included in Barton Farm. So people will be able to get to, um, the Worthy's via, but they'll just walk within the Barton Farm site when that path is completed. Um, it wasn't a reasonable request of us to, for them to install a pavement all the way along Wellhouse Lane for six houses. If it had been a few hundred, then it may well have been. But for that level of development to then install that amount of paving wasn't a reasonable request. I, I couldn't.
I think, I think we were suggesting that it was an easier route than the zigzag path that's in the plans. Um, and, and because when the zigzag path was put in from right by the bridge up the quite steep hill, there was no question of Wellhouse Lane being, Wellhouse Cottage being demolished and turned into six other houses. So that was never an option, but now it is an option. And I just wondered if, 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 uh, Cala had considered that as an alternative option to the path. And this, and this path should also have been put in at the 200 house sale point. And there's absolutely no sign it was happening at all. So I would like to ask both Joe and Ian, when, when we're likely to see this link through and, uh, and can, can you consider the alternative route?
Uh, I think Viv may have resigned up to answer that question.
Viv, we'd love to hear from you.
I'll do what I can. Thanks very much. Um, a couple of things, just to hopefully help to clarify. I think the, the obligation to deliver the route through the railway bridge, I, I believe was the opening of the primary school rather than the 200th occupation. And I think there was always that sort of slight conflict that, that actually the need to get an access through the railway arch didn't correspond with the opening of the school per se, because no primary school children were envisaged to be coming from Headborne Worthy to the school through the railway arch at the opening of the school. The intention was always that the opening of the school would serve the, the residents of King's Barton themselves. So that probably has to a degree led to delay in us getting the connection through the, uh, through the railway bridge. In terms of the actual connection itself, um, members will all be aware that the public right of way along the ridge line extends right to the, the boundary of the railway line on the, um, the eastern edge of our development. So, and then if you're in that location, you would come along the ridge line, then you head south and effectively skirt the railway line before crossing underneath the railway line, um, near the Barton Farm meadows and then traversing all the way back north again towards Headborne Worthy. So the natural desire line was, was obviously, would have been at the time the zigzag path. So you're, you're utilizing the bulk of the public right of way along the ridge line and then take the shortest possible distance to the railway bridge before heading further east into Headborne Worthy. Um, I think Chris may be asking me to share a plan a little bit later, but certainly as to the north of our phase four development, we have, there's always been the intention and we, we show it on our master plans, a, a, a footpath which will connect, um, all, all along that northern boundary, uh, through landscape, a nice attractive landscape route rather than alongside, uh, Wellhouse Lane itself. And we, we had no, um, concerns at all with connecting that footpath or allowing the future connection into the six dwellings as part of Barton Farm, um, on Wellhouse Lane. So that, that can be provided for in the future. So the intention would be that those residents of those six dwellings can have a choice. They could either walk along this new footpath that we'll, we will put in as part of our, part of our phase four development, uh, and then come through the railway bridge at that particular point, rather than having to walk along, uh, Wellhouse Lane itself. I hope that clarifies the reasoning for sticking with a zigzag path and that it connects logically into the public right of way itself.
Fine, if you're happy to carry on with the zigzag path, but phase four sounds an awful long way off. And we have lots of people using, wanting to access that route through to Headborne Worthy on bikes and on foot, for whom there is no safe route at the moment.
Uh, the zigzag path has been designed to be cycle compliant. So it's, it's had a gradient, hence the zigzag for it to work for buggies and cyclists. Um, it, it's not, it's not a steep zigzag. It's, it's, um, forget the gradient itself, but it's within the, the standards required for cycle and buggy use, um, as well as it being tarmac. Um.
But my point is, you know, is, have we got to wait until phase four for this, which should have been there before the primary school opened, um, to, to appear? Or is that, is that scheduled sooner than that?
It is, is scheduled sooner. So the zigzag path will connect in from the railway bridge to the public right of way in the near future. Um, once we've got the technical approval of the, the, the traffic lights on the railway bridge, we can then construct that access and connection into the public right of way, which will then give residents of Headborne Worthy a route from the railway bridge along the public right of way out to Andover Road. Uh, and then subsequently then they, they've got a choice of heading south through phase one A, once the spine road's in. So we, we are looking at the wider connections. You're right, phase four B is, is a long way away. Um, hence the need to connect to the public right of way as quickly as we possibly can.
Thank you Viv. Well, that's encouraging. Perhaps you could give us a, a clearer timeline at the next meeting and hopefully the, the lights issues with, uh, British, with Network Rail and everybody else will be sorted out by then. Thank you very much Viv. Thank you very much Joe. Um, I think we've dealt with the highways update now, unless there are any other questions from members? Nope. Lovely. Um, Chris, do you want to just very quickly give us a quick update on the implementation? Thank you.
Sure. Yeah. I, I think we've covered most of these items, um, throughout the, the discussions that we've had. Um, phase one B is obviously complete pending the, uh, in terms of the housing building. Uh, and Ian Curry discussed earlier on where, um, the, the process of, um, doing remedial works and fixing things that aren't quite right. Um, phase one A, uh, I understand is still selling quite well, uh, despite these crazy times that we live in. Um, and so I'm writing there around 60 occupations down there. Uh, and perhaps a, a, a map that we should have, um, brought up earlier, uh, the final section is, uh, the footpath network from Courtney Road that will go through King's Barton in, in various phases, obviously. Obviously, when Phase 1A is completed, there'll be a slightly different route into the Courtney Road connection. When, as Ian said, the construction traffic and construction activities allow that. But there is obviously a temporary route that will connect to Andover Road before that. The only missing connection will be the public right of way that we're working on quite hard to get surfaced as well. So we should hopefully, in the fairly near future, have a full connection all the way through that people can use. That's all I have Chair, unless there are any questions?
Thank you, Chris. I think we have councillor Porter would like to speak. Are there any questions for Chris before councillor Porter speaks? Nope, lovely. Thank you councillor Porter.
Thank you. Can I recommend that the mood of today's meeting is definitely to get the join from Worthy Road to Andover Road. And that's very clear from the residents' requests as well as councillors. And it's also a mood to revisit from our members of the public that came to revisit the Worthy Road connection from a cycle point of view, having a crossing there. And to continue our definite request for a hard surface between Andover Road and the school at least, at the very least. And I wonder if we could respond to councillor Humby to thank him for the progress we've made so far, but to look forward to more progress and to seek more progress on that. It's the strongest case we have really as a forum to make that point.
I think the forum as a whole would endorse those views councillor Porter. Thank you. Councillor Horrell, you have a comment you'd like to make?
Chair, yes, thank you. I would. And it's just really to say thank you because actually we've had a lot of very important issues raised this evening and some particularly tricky issues that need to be resolved. But we should be celebrating, and it's hard to do that in these circumstances, that we're making such good progress on a really important development. To say thank you to those locally who are giving us input and guidance on what they're sort of seeking support on. And also to the Carla team and to Chris for actually keeping us, you know, all very well informed. So it feels tonight as if we've had quite a lot of tricky issues. But actually, we shouldn't miss the opportunity to say we're, you know, we're doing well. It's really good to be offering the opportunity for people to be living in that location. Also, you know, the affordable piece that we have that Carla have rightly committed. So I just wanted to say thank you and for that to be noted this evening amidst all the questions and follow ups that we have to manage. Thank you Chair.
Indeed councillor Horrell, thank you very much for that contribution. And I would endorse those thanks to all those who've been along this evening to make their contributions. And I think we've had a very positive outcome from this evening's meeting. There's still a long way to go, obviously. But it's hard work creating a new community, not just physically building it, but all the work that goes on around to help those new residents feel part of a community and feel welcome and feel safe and secure. So thank you to everybody who's contributing to that. Our next meeting, and we have noted all those reports. Thank you very much, everybody. Our next meeting is on the 16th of March. I dread, I don't think it's realistic to expect there will be anything other than virtual still by then, but one lives in hope. So our next virtual meeting will be on the 16th of March. And we will be inviting our Housing Association liaison people to come along and update us on both their contributions to Phases 1A and 1B. So, and then maybe other reports as well, and the usual reports and so on. So I hope to see you all at the next meeting. And in the meantime, thank you very much for all your contributions. And I wish you all a pleasant evening. Thank you very much, everybody. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.